It's 5:30, we're gonna open a meeting. Welcome to the March 26 Hadley School Committee Meeting. Hello. I'll call the meeting to order and I will need to get a motion to move into executive session.
Can you read this?
Yes, please.
The chair will entertain.
The motion.
Move to go in -- is that my question?
Yep.
Move to go into executive session to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel and to discuss the deployment of security personnel or devices or strategies with respect thereto. I've determined an open meeting will have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and to reconvene in open session.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Hi.
Sorry, I have to go press.
Roll call, sorry. Keith?
Aye.
Tara?
Yes.
Paul?
Yep.
Heather?
Yes.
Oh, it's Tamara. Tamara, we're doing a roll call to go into executive session.
Tamara?
Hi. Okay. We will reconvene in open session in about, in less than 30 minutes?
Yes.
Okay. Great. Okay, we'll call the meeting back to order, open session. And first item is adjustments to the agenda. I have one that I'd like to request, which is to move up public comment period to before the presentations. Are there any other requested adjustments?
Just so we can go back into executive session at the end of the meeting.
Okay, yes, at the end we'll go back into executive session and we'll not reconvene in open after that?
Cool.
Okay. All right, so then that will move us to public comment period. We have Linda Castrinovo here to present information on ranked choice voting that has edible props that go with it. I would like to ask typically, public comment is three minutes for our policy, but I'd like to ask whether the committee would consider five minutes for this presentation and any other public comment that there may be. Is that okay? Do we need to vote on that?
It's an exception to the policy.
Okay, so, all in favor?
Aye. I'm sorry, can you get a first and a second? I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Motion to extend public comment.
Motion to extend public comment.
Second.
To five minutes.
Okay. Can you second it? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, great. Linda?
Thank you very much, thanks for having me here. I'm the person who sponsored a warrant article to bring ranked choice voting to our town meeting. So on the annual meeting on May 3rd, our, anyone who shows up anyway will have a chance to cast their ballot for or against this idea. So I wanted to make sure that as many people as possible in Hadley understand what ranked choice voting is. So, if you could raise your hand if you've ever heard of ranked choice voting. And keep it, oh, so only two, so that's good, so I'll tell you about it. Ranked choice voting, you have a sample ballot, you have actually two sample ballots in front of you. It's a change to the way that we vote. So right now, when you vote, when you vote in the election, you cast your ballot for a single candidate. And with a ranked ballot, you can rank the candidates in order of preference. So you vote for a first choice, and then you make a series of backup choices for second and third choice. And what this does is solves some big problems. Many times, when there are more than two candidates running for an office, the winner never receives majority support. And so, using this ranked choice voting method, you can guarantee that the winner of the election has broad-based majority support. So you might ask, oops, let me, this is another, you have this other sample of a ballot. So, the simple ballot, the candy ballot, is just a column system. You can just rank a first choice, you can, on this example, a candidate's name, a second choice. And then, in another sample ballot, you would have all the candidates listed in each column, and you make a one mark in your first choice column, another mark in the second choice, third choice, and so on. So, people say, oh, we'll solve some problems, let's, how does it work? So I wanted to give you two examples. I may not have time to show all of the, both of the examples, but I can show you this example with your favorite candy. And this, these ballots were collected over a few, a number of different meetings. I did it for simplicity's sake, that the first thing that happens in a ranked ballot or ranked choice voting election is that all the first choice votes are tallied. And so that's what you see here. These, these were the ballots, there are 14 first choice votes for Snickers, there's seven for Twix, eight for Milky Way, and six for Rolo. We did have quite a few write-ins. And so, the first thing that happens is you count how many ballots total. We had 48 ballots. So for a single winner election, the winner has to receive a majority of the votes, which is 50 percent plus one. So half of 48 is 24, add another one, the winner has to have 25 votes to win. You can see in our first choice votes, Snickers is ahead, but they don't have majority support, which means that more than half the people voted against Snickers as their favorite candy. So, if, in the way our election works now, Snickers would win. Maybe, sometimes it happens that it's the same and sometimes it is. So, on our write-ins, oh, and some of the elections, some of the ballots were mis-marked, and we can go over those a different, but very few actually end up being mis-marked, because ranking is something we do naturally. I always say, like, how many people really walk out of the ice cream store when they're out of your favorite flavor without your backup choice, right? Or you go to a restaurant, you go to go out to eat, your favorite restaurant's closed, you go to your next restaurant. So, in the, in our write-in situation, we had, actually, quite a few write-ins, but there was only one for dark chocolate, and that second choice was Rolo. So we'll put it under Rolo. This second choice was for Twix, this was the peppermint patty. Second choice was Rolo. Second choice was Rolo. Second choice was Twix. Second choice is Twix. So you can see here how a second choice could surpass this first choice, this first winner. Here's another Twix. Oh, here's some Snickers, second choice for Snickers. Snickers, Snickers, Twix, and Rolo. So now what we're gonna do is, in the second round, we re-tallied. So we're going to add four to Rolo. So they have 10. Milky Way still has eight. Put those in there. We're going to add... Four, five, six to Twix. And Snickers has four more. So on the second round, we add, we total these up, so eight, so 10, 18, 13, eight and 10. Snickers still does not have a majority. So this is the really interesting thing that happens. Now we're going to remove the candidate, we're gonna eliminate the candidate that has the least amount of first choice votes. So Milky Way gets eliminated. And we're gonna look and see where, who they put theirs for their second choice. So there's a Twix. This Milky Way voter didn't list a second choice. So this person disenfranchised themselves, they have taken themselves out of the, out of the voting intention, silencing their own, their own voice. Chris, Twix?
I love a Milky Way.
Twix, Twix.
Linda, I'll have to call time here, too.
Snickers, okay.
We're gonna wrap up.
Snickers and Snickers. But so you can see how this would happen, so now Snickers has 18, plus three, they're at 21, and we would eliminate them the next candidate.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Linda, let me ask you too, appreciate you presenting the information. I understand you have a couple, at least one other presentation coming up, select board?
I'm going to speak at the select board, I'm gonna speak at the mothers' club. I'm happy to come to anybody's house and do the presentation, the candy balloting is kind of fun. There is a, an interesting thing that happens when there are multiple candidates, a multi-winner election, and I have a, I have some slides about that as well, which might be adventurous at some point.
Okay.
Okay?
Great, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
You will.
I always enjoy having clarity on ballot items and town meeting items, warrant items. Thank you very much.
So just to be clear, you're asking for our support if this were to come as a new way to do town meeting?
Well, every person who comes to town meeting will be, will have a chance to vote on this item.
So you're educating?
Mm-hmm. And I think that people don't tend to vote for things, they don't understand. And so, really what I want to do is educate people about what the, what the change would mean, and how it would create a more representative, formerly it creates better representation. It's been shown to improve the, increase the number of candidates that run for office, it increases voter turnout. And I just, I'm convinced, and it's, and we have evidence from many cities and towns across the country, almost 4 million people across America use ranked choice voting for the municipal elections already. And more candidates run, more people vote, and people are more engaged in their town government. And I think that would be good for our town.
I just spoke calling it a ballot item, it's a warrant article.
It's a warrant article.
An upcoming town meeting that would, that is presented for all town elections.
Mm-hmm.
I'm looking at David, correct?
Thinking for all elected offices.
Of all elected offices. Whether they have a single candidate or multiple running seats.
The way it's written now, and correct me if I'm right, is that it's, that it's not a way of changing the way we vote on the budget or on warrant articles.
Right, I mean, there are 44 elected officials in our town, and in the last five years there have been only eight contested elections. So it's, I mean, I, this is a way to get more people involved, and I think a lot of times people don't run for office because they're happy with the leadership and they don't want to take, or have a chance of siphoning off votes from someone who they really like serving the town. And ranked choice voting is a way to make sure that people can run and they won't split votes, they won't be a spoiler candidate. It could, really produces fair outcomes.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Is there any other public comment for today? Okay. Then we will move on to presentations and discussion items. School state safety and security recommendations and next steps.
So after our executive session on the deployment of, school safety and deployment of security devices, we will take the recommendations from Hadley, PD, do some research on our end, invest, integrate their priorities in the capital plan, bring the capital plan back before the school committee at a regularly scheduled April meeting. Additional items, we will revisit again in a future executive session.
Okay.
Can I just say, Mr. Nixon, officers and chief vice president are doing a great job, really appreciate their support.
Thank you, thank you so much for the feedback.
We appreciate them diligently walking through this information with us as well with, you know, also helping guide us through priority items and other topics that they have presented. It helps us understand what, you know, what we should be examining more closely. Okay, special education stabilization fund. That's our next topic. Now I'm listed on that with you, David, so...
So we appreciate the opportunity to talk last week at tri-board outside of the open meeting here, but I had asked all of us to think about any questions we may have on the stabilization fund. And it may help, as you did in that tri-board meeting, to frame the two, we have two warrant articles that reference the stabilization fund. If you could help frame that for us, I think we had some questions just about how that would work.
Certainly, would it be helpful if I stood and talked a little bit?
And we can, we can turn, excuse me, Mr. Beck, do you mind turning the projector off so David's seeing?
That's fine, I can.
Just comment. Thank you.
The basic concept is, is that we want to produce budgets, our budget projections are 18 months out, we want to produce budget projections which are, that reduce risk, minimize risk or manage risk, and prove our clarity and accuracy in how we present that budget. And whenever we have a budget which has a certain amount of risk, and when I say risk, I don't mean risk in terms of hazard, but it's just having an obligation which is non-negotiable show up halfway through the fiscal year that we need to fund. And so we want to make sure that our budgets have the capacity to fund something that may happen during the middle of the year. So for example, the health insurance line item, so we pay for health insurance for all of our employees who are eligible for that. And we have, we have three types of uncertainties when putting together that budget. One, at any time somebody may have some sort of qualifying event, they get married, they have a baby, something that changes them from, say, a family plan to, from an individual plan to a family plan. And then we have the open enrollment period in every February, so it's, at that point, everybody who is eligible for, for health insurance can change their plan. They can go from an HMO to an indemnity plan, or they can change from single to family, and so that's another kind of uncertainty that goes into that, into that budget. And then formally, it's no longer the case, we're finally getting out of this, formally the health insurance calendar year did not line up with the fiscal calendar year. So we had the last quarter of the fiscal year, April, May, of, April, May, June, where we actually had no projections at all as to what those health insurance costs may be. We generally had a sense that they would rise, but we didn't know if that was a 5% or 10% or even higher rise. So in the past, we had to bake these, this budget with generous margins for the uncertainties that we did not foresee and had to manage, and were obliged to pay if it, if they came about. So, at one, and so at some times, I'm returning over $100,000 back to the general fund at the end of the fiscal year because we had taken too conservative a projection of where the budget was going to go. And, you know, that made people unhappy, that's $100,000 that you could use for other purposes, for other productive purposes. So, in a sense, the school budget is the same, you put together a budget which projects out 18 months what you think that your costs are going to be, but you have to build into that a certain amount of risk management. People coming in mid-year that have educational obligations, and these people deserve an education same as anybody else, that we have to pay for, you have to budget for. And so I'm trying to come up with a way, and this is open for discussion, we could repackage this in any way that you would like, for a way that we can set up some sort of stabilization fund which would be accessible by the vote of the school committee at any point during the middle of the fiscal year to manage students being placed within the district that you have to pay additional funds for, whether that be Smith Vocational or some other student that needs some sort of support. So, we were thinking about transferring money from the stabilization account into a special stabilization account, and then appropriating from that stabilization account a sum of money which would be available to the school committee to be used during the middle of the fiscal year. And that is in a nutshell what we're talking about. Still an item for discussion with the select board, presented it to Dr. McKenzie, we talked about it with Chris Desjardins, and Heather Klusch was there to see the discussion at the tri-board.
As was Tara. Okay.
So, right now I've written this up as two articles because it's performing two financial functions. I always like to combine articles wherever you have a like object in mind, so I might combine this into one article for presentation on a town meeting, or if we're ready to do it at the annual town meeting, so, so be it. If not, then do it for some other later town meeting.
Any questions at this point?
The proposal, David, is for not to exceed 2% of the annual budget, is that right? In school spending?
No, there's no percentage requirement here, this is, was this the law?
There is in the law.
Yeah, so, the law is something that you brought to my attention, that would require a vote of both the select board and the committee to take off, take money out of there. The, the select board has said that they have no interest in participating in educational choices or educational policy. They want to put that in your hands where it rightly belongs in my mind. So that law there is not something that we would follow, or we would follow the law, but we would not choose this particular law, nor did we set up this particular stabilization fund.
Well, I just had a question about that in general, so it says, in the law, it says that in order to transfer the funds, there would have to be a majority of vote by a school committee and one other legislative body, but that says without further appropriation for unanticipated or budgeted costs. So how, how would we, we would have to have support of select board and majority school board in order for this to...
So think, think of this as a, as a building project or a special project, like any other, any other project. We go to town meeting, we raise funds, we identify people who are responsible for the expenditure of that funds, whether that be the library committee or the select board or the police department, and then they go out and they spend those funds. That's what I'm trying to set up, is something as easy as that.
And where do these funds come from originally to bait the answer to this?
The original source of money would be from our general stabilization fund. We have over $2 million in that, so we can afford to give some money for that purpose.
So it comes from the town stabilization fund?
Yeah. It's not your money. It becomes your money, but it's not originally from your money.
Just, and the town special, the town stabilization fund, you have a select board voted policy on that, that it's minimum 10% operating budget of the previous fiscal year?
Right.
That's correct? And then free cash has the same 10% reserve, so these are two, so is it combined? Can you just clarify that for me? It's just stabilization?
Yes, the only one that we targeted is a percentage, is stabilization. And then free cash, we basically said that we didn't want to ever spend it down below a certain dollar figure.
So that's not tied to a percentage? That's a minimum dollar amount. Stabilization is 10% of operating, so roughly 1.8 million, probably.
Yeah, something like that.
Is what it would be for fiscal year 18 based on fiscal year 17's operating budget? Yes. Okay.
Free cash, it's, we're not supposed to spend that down below $75,000.
May I ask one more question about this? Just on the stabilization side. You, you said roughly 2 million, you may have been rounding, I don't expect you to pull exact figures out, I'm not trying to go there, I just was wondering, so if for some reason that it was determined that, that, that schools might already have an effective way of managing contingencies or unexpected expenses in special education, and the town had an excess of its policy, let's say stabilization was up around 12 or 13%, would that then allow the town to create some other, utilize those funds for one-time expenses? I know you can't use stabilization for operating, but could you use them for one-time capital investments that the town might need?
Yes. So, the law changed not too long ago that we can set up these special stabilization accounts for special purposes. We do it with our capital budget already, we have a capital stabilization account, which was seeded with money that was equivalent to our meals tax and annual income, which is around $300,000 per year, not making that, that commitment in current years, but originally that's how it was set up. So, so this would be yet another special stabilization fund. Once we set it up, it would be drawn down, and we haven't talked about how to replenish it, it's still something that we're working on in terms of, in terms of what would be a viable way to sustainably support that stabilization fund over time.
Can I just question? Just to make a clarifying comment, though, just to be clear, just in case you know who's watching at home. I think it's fair to say that the current select board, and I think I can say for the finance committee, would have a visceral reaction to the spend down stabilization account. So the only reason that this discussion has been taking place, and again, there has not been a full discussion on the part of the select board and finance committee because, quite frankly, motive, if the school committee says this is, this is a really bad idea, we can't support it, then it's not something we can carry forward with. But the idea is that you're really swapping one reserve fund for another. The concern is that, yes, we're above and beyond this 10% market we have, but as our budget grows, that required amount is gonna grow too. So you have to kind of figure out what's the trajectory of when you're eventually gonna head up, and then we need to put ourselves in a position of having to add to stabilization? So I think when this policy was put in place, we all looked at each other and kind of said, okay, we're not looking to kind of carve that off and start spending the excess. But I think it's a little bit of a different conversation if you're talking about still maintaining some sort of a reserve.
Yes, then next time may I ask you a question? May I ask a question? And this will help too. My question may have implied, so I need clarification. The policy stated as a floor for stabilization, not to go below 10% of previous years operating or existing years operating?
Correct.
They'd have to be previous.
Yes.
So, but there's no ceiling on stabilization. So you're not required to bring it to that 10%, you can have more than the 10%.
Yes.
And, and the spirit of my other question, which ultimately, this is not at all my decision, it's the school committee's decision, but the spirit of my other question was, if there were, because I know the school committee, the school department has a vested interest in cooperating with all the needs of the town, if there were other departments or needs that the townspeople had determined were a priority, swapping one stabilization for another could potentially be a possibility. Because you're saying there are, there are various things that one can set up stabilization for. Capital, equipment, as long as they're not recurring costs.
I think there's, actually, Chris might know this better, transportation maybe, is that another one that other school districts have used?
I actually don't know.
So, I can tell you the law's really, really clear, I mean, I know you're talking about doing something that, the law is very clear, it's special education stabilization, if it's called that, it is specifically for outages of costs associated with special education and said transportation costs.
Yes.
Smith-Voc would not fall into what the law is here.
Correct.
Other towns have done that differently.
Yes.
They voted when they, a long time ago, Hadley voted to put it in the, the school operating, other towns pay it out of the town side. So, I'm not saying there aren't, as you said, on the municipal finance side, there could be other ways of setting up special ed stabilization, excuse me, stabilization, but special ed stabilization is clearly one of the different states.
Yeah, I've titled this educational contingency stabilization account, that may be inartful, but it broadens the use of the stabilization account away from just strictly the spent issues you just raised.
Really, and, maybe to your point, we're trying to get a little creative here and figure out, is there a way to manage our balance sheet as a town and put these dollars to use in some sort of effective way, as opposed to kind of every man for himself trying to protect ourselves? And I think your example was a great one with the health coverage. Never on the town would we want to be in a position where we couldn't properly appropriate funding for people in need of health coverage because they made a choice that we couldn't control on July 1st. And so we tried to think about the situation with schools, with this being something, you know, we're always kind of trolling to see what best practices are elsewhere, and David uncovered this in some conversations, so that's why it's coming to the table. Very open-minded for other ideas, I'm just hoping we can find a way to start trying to figure out some longer-range planning on this.
And maybe just final clarification. The example that you gave with health insurance, excellent example, that is something that in order to control for the unforeseen, it's, as you said, sometimes you end up returning about $100,000 to the town.
Oh, we did that once.
Once.
I was just gonna say, returning.
I will say that although it's logical to assume right now, like for the past few fiscal years, that there would be an analogous situation happening in special education and the school department budget, that we would conservatively and prudently be over-budgeting in the event that something could happen, we've historically under-budgeted. And because the school committee has a sound school choice policy, as a matter of fact, I think we were the chair when that was created, Ron, that we have been able to manage those contingencies with that. But I, I just want to clarify that for people who are watching, that there hasn't, we have not historically, the data demonstrate clearly, that we are not over-budgeting in our special education, even though we have encountered unexpected expenses, but the school choice return policy has prevented us from having to. And I think to add to that, when we've had to, when we've been pressed to look at those funds and funding more out of that for the budget, we've been able to do that while not, you know, going past what our policy says we need to retain. I think the thing I'm struggling with, and this is not, you know, this is just more me personally, when I hear, you know, the needs of the town and the needs of other departments, we just start with, you know, police and knowing the fire, they, they all have needs, and those are identified needs. And I raised this last week, that here we are saying, well, let's carve out some money for something that isn't yet an identified need, it's a what-if, it's a contingency plan, you call it managing the uncertainties. I totally get that, but it's, it's hard for me to reconcile that as a priority when compared to the needs that are identified needs from these other departments.
to the needs that are identified needs from these other departments.
But remember what we're talking about again is a balance sheet item? So we're talking about a stabilization fund that's a reserve, and many of the other needs that we have involve ongoing operating. So a one-time spend down or carve out from effectively cash doesn't resolve the issue. And so never do we want, and similar to the school choice argument, never do we want to put ourselves in a situation where we're taking one-time money and then trying to, you know, figure out where to fund the ongoing operations that have been created from that. So that's why we haven't gone to that one, we're talking about police, fire personnel and those things.
So one of the follow-up questions as well, and that helps to clarify, you know, the difference between the two, and what we're talking about here is not being an operating budget item, but as you said, it really is a contingency stabilization fund. The lines as far as what the amount would be appropriated to that would be, are currently blank in the warrant. Can we talk about what is being considered, or is that something that you need us to advise on, or?
Let me just throw some numbers out, so that, and this is not backed up by any conversation I've had with any of the finance committee members or with the select board, but if we're talking about $30,000, let's stop talking, you know, find something else to do that could have been a difference. If we're talking $100,000, then that's money that may make a difference and may be worth talking about. So I would be looking at a number of about $100,000 or perhaps more.
And Chris, can you remind us what, given our current policy, what we are currently, per policy retaining in school choice, not dipping below our ballpark?
Sure, you need to maintain the amount of the grants that we receive.
So in the budget summary for FY19, that's roughly $341,000. That's your minimum, that's your current work for policy.
And currently about the school choice balance is 740 or something?
No, because it's already committed. You'll have an ending balance, our projected ending balance in FY18 will be roughly $555,000. We have additional revenues coming in, special ed increment that we projected in FY19. The budget that we presented, that we reviewed with the finance subcommittee, has $720,000 of school choice being applied in FY19, and we've burned your projected balance down to 344, so still above your policy floor, just above the policy.
What are the questions?
Molly, you said that the select board and finance committee had a shift of employee wage, but have you discussed it at all, or just in general sense?
Honestly, I don't know. Amy can speak for the finance committee at the select board level. There was really, I recall, kind of like, you know, 5,000-foot discussion on this. And I can tell you right now, as we're sitting here, I imagine there would not be unanimity on the part of the select board in terms of supporting this or not, but that could change once we have a full discussion and know how the school committee feels about it, so.
The finance committee hasn't really, right now, are going through trying to balance budget. We thought this might be a way to work with the schools, but yet get our budget to balance. So I think it depends. I think if we can get, you know, it's not something we're looking for, you know, we don't, we're not looking to spend any part of the stabilization, but if we need to, to balance, you know, it might be something to consider. Because it is, it is just for emergencies, it's for the risk, and it's just going from one stabilization to another, so it's something that we're considering.
I'm just curious if there's, if accounts of this have happened in other, in other towns, if there's any evidence of like what that's done for like school budgets down the road, like longer term? Like, do we know that we have, there's this money that's, can be dipped into for contingency? Has that negatively affected school budgets in other towns?
Fair question, I don't have an answer off the top of my head for you.
I can get it for you. Contact me, I see funding towns and how special ed stabilization and how the school committee chairs report and what's on the pack.
So I'm about to ask some basic questions during this opportunity. If we ever needed to, if we needed to expend more than we budgeted for, right now we dip into our school choice dollars. With this set aside, this carve-out, as you will, we would continue to do that. And in the unlikely event that we got to a certain floor, I guess it would be, then we would ask the town to...
You'd ask yourself.
Well, we would need to vote with, we would have to vote alongside another committee.
I'm sorry, are you saying...
Not according to the article and how you described it last week, you were trying to make it so that we didn't have to come and have a joint vote with the select board.
Right.
And were you asking, in the absence of this article? Like, are you asking what we currently would have?
Yeah.
Right now, if for some reason we had insufficient school choice and an unanticipated expense in special education, what would the steps be? I'm just trying to, is that what you were asking?
Yeah, I mean, we would never spend down our, our school choice to zero, right? If, we would go to the town first, is that what?
Well, your policy indicates that you have a floor in there. The town is, I'm their designated, but it's a town's fiscal and legal responsibility to account for all special education costs for all residents, whether they go to our schools or not, age 3 to 21. And so, and the town can't reneg on that financial obligation, although the machinations that you go through are going through a town to be able to. But ultimately, it has to be paid, that's a requirement of the law, and it's a town's obligation. So we would go and request from the town.
Okay. And to D, have we had to go to the town and request?
Not since I've been here. But perhaps...
I'm not aware of a server having to do that, okay.
If we had this fund, we could cheers the committee to expend, fund this fund for those unique special...
Instead of dipping into more than we wanted to by our school choice.
I think that's all part of this, as to, a question as to whether we would still retain the amount of school choice that we retain for our policy, or to ask is to reexamine our policy, retain less school choice, fund more out of school choice towards the budget, knowing that we have, say, $100,000 set aside in this account, that we know, well, then we have some wiggle room, and we fund $100,000 more out of our school choice, adjust our policy to be plus than 50% or whatever it is, and hope that we don't have to use this fund that's sitting there.
But the part that concerns me is that we don't know how this would be replenished. So this is for fiscal year 19, so now if we're adjusting our policy for our floor of our school choice, and a year down the road, two years down the road, whatever it may be, we can't replenish, then what, we revisit our policies again? We have to build up our school choice again to a sufficient amount? We put ourselves into a problem in the future? I don't know. I would rather not affect, change the policy at all, and just have it as a, continue to be fiscally responsible, reliant on ourselves for those increases, and if there was a emergency carve-out, then have that as a backup plan, but not to change the policy.
So if that was how we proceeded, if we had a combination of current policy and the stabilization account, I'm hearing that we have about $40,000 of school choice money, roughly, because I think we said that three of seven, we have to retain 344 of our...
Yeah, I was going to say less than four.
You have 3,000. It's about 3200.
3,000 plus. So we have about 3,000 extra school choice money we can spend towards the budget while still retaining our current policy. Is that where the ask, to basically spend down to our policy? Yeah.
Well, we don't anticipate doing that.
I know that our retained amount has gotten lower and lower every year.
True.
But no, we have not dipped below that.
And can I just, just to say, this is why we want to have the discussion. I don't want this to come across as some, so we're trying to affect some sort of, you know, swap here, to put anybody in a, in a worse position. I think what we're trying to do is figure out a cooperative, cooperative way to work with you, and open-minded to other ideas, but we worry when we think about what keeps everybody up at night. We see the school choice balance, we know how it's being used. We know, I think from the presentations, the challenges facing the schools, you know the challenges on the broader town that we're all facing. The more wild swings and uncertainty that we can take out of all of the budgets, the better. So again, we're just trying to figure out a way to do that. So again, any, and that's, that's why David wanted to bring it to you, so that you could have this discussion, maybe come, either come back with a hell no, or, you know, point counter point, whatever.
Yeah, if people have a better idea, I'm happy to hear it. This is my, my first blush at this one. I think the larger context, though, where we're having this discussion is if you go back as many as five, six, seven, eight years ago, under the Donald Boyer administration, schools came to us and said, we have some real funding problems, you need to help us out. And the town, over a two-year period, stepped up to that challenge. I think that was $800,000 plus that we had to add to the budget that we didn't, hadn't really planned for. We've had to step up our game with respect to OPEC, had to step up our game with respect to public safety, both police and fire. Certainly there's some buildings causing a lot of head in lines right now. You know, so in that kind of a context, multi-year context, budgets are becoming tighter. And in an effort to help mitigate risk, manage these budgets, and increase accuracy in budgeting, this is one proposal, not the only possible proposal, to help you out through your job.
We appreciate that. One question about the law, knowing the comment about we wouldn't be doing this under this chapter 40, section 13E, what, I guess what law would apply in this, and what relative percentage would we have to take into account?
So since we're making this up on our own, the municipal financial law, it wouldn't be beholden to the percentages that we've been talking about, that would not be a factor here. Except that whenever you're talking about special stabilization funds, there are percentages, ceilings whereby you can't put in more money than a certain X percent, but that level is so high up, I can't even remember what it is. It can't be, I won't even say a sub-percentage of the overall operating budget, which would be many millions of dollars, so we've never had to worry about that part.
In the research on what other towns are doing, is it possible to find out whether they do it under that guideline or a different, under the guideline you gave to us, in our packet?
I can certainly find out.
Versus something else?
If they are organized, what statute they organize the funds under? My money's on the fact that if it is purged as a special education stabilization fund, that it is most likely organized under chapter 40, section 13E. I don't think any school department attorney would ever recommend that you call something something and then not abide by the statute that's called by that name.
But there's something else.
Educational, financial, state-led. I will ask if it's, what statute it's organized under.
You can have 2%, though, I mean, if you do it under this law in capital, it's $160,000, sure. Net school spending. So just to be clear, Heather articulated a construction about, figured out on your comment about ways to reduce the school budget. Does that, how do you see this operating? So we would basically set aside funds from a stabilization fund for possible spend costs here, but would you then see a commensurate reduction in the annual funding request?
I believe that's what we are looking for, is instead of, you know, right now, instead of funding you maybe the 100, an extra $100,000, you would use 100,000 of, out of your school choice, and we would have the reserve there for you.
Which would mean we have to, we need to try our options.
Right.
When do we give our opinions on this as a board by?
Yeah, and I think it, I think it's also our opinion as a board, or opportunity also to discuss this with select board and full finance committee, I'm assuming at the next tri board meeting?
Yeah, so I'm just thinking about the calendar, I was going to, next week, send off the, midweek, I was going to send the whole warrant off to council for review. We need to post note later than April 26th.
And we can always pass over this if it's...
Yeah, I know, or defer to the fall town meeting.
Sounds like it would just a tri board, have a conversation, have a conversation with select board the next, if the school committee is to vote, you don't have to vote not to do something, there would only be votes if you're going to do something. I'll include it, and at your regularly scheduled school committee meeting in April, if that's the bill we can make.
Thank you for thinking creatively about this.
I'll leave this around if you have any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, FY19 budget.
So, in your packet, this is, we presented a spend trend revenue assumption to the finance committee. That was on March 1st, I think?
Yeah.
At that meeting, the presentation of finance subcommittee, we had an anticipated increase in local contribution of roughly 2.28% or an increase of $158,000. We had applied additional school choice money because those figures stood part of what we're discussing now. We have a special education cost that we are going to incur for all of next year, even though we anticipate that we will not be, but the timing of some of the changes for a particular family, the law is clear that it is costs that we will put in our budget for next year. And so April 1st is the magic line in terms of move-in, move-out, and what school districts are responsible for. If a, if a Hadley resident moves to another town prior to April 1st, that town picks up all costs associated with programming. If a resident moves after April 1st, the town of Hadley continues to pay those costs for the following fiscal year. So some information, our information was updated around special education, which is why you see a change in the summary sheet of applying more school choice than we had originally indicated to the finance subcommittee. However, the local contribution is now down at roughly 134, which represents a 1.93% increase over last fiscal year. The instructions we were given, as you know, was to provide a level service budget, and we started our initial level service with teachers. We asked teachers all the time, what does the need to do your work well? And our initial requests came in, they emailed it, data received from us in January, at roughly a $216,000 increase. We did pairing down, went before finance subcommittee, that came down to $158,000 increase. We're now at a 134 for local contribution, again, which represents a local contribution increase of 1.93, and total budget increase of 2.09. As the summary indicates, all of our bargaining units have been settled for the next three fiscal years, and we created a level service budget as directed, and I'll say again, I'm happy to say that a level services budget for a school department is coming at it below 2%. That's the information we have currently.
So a question, because Molly's here. I could ask you. So our instructions were to provide a level service budget, but I know at the tri board meeting, you had indicated that we came in over what the town had asked us to do, which going back, David had indicated it was a level funded budget.
Yeah, and I apologize, not, you did not come in over what the town asked, but the point I was making was the number, I was trying to hone in on what was the number that David kept in...
that David kept in the budget, I call it the roll-up, you know, once all the departments come in or whatever. And at that time, I think he didn't have the school department figure, so he was starting with a level funded, which was, you know, whatever we gave you last year, and he was starting to do some work on these articles in anticipation of having further discussion, so it was an unknown. What I just wanted to be clear on is, right, and so what happens is, you know, the, the roll-up occurs, the town administrator presents the select board with a balanced budget, so David did that, but part of the balancing was not to put in the figure that you came up with, and I, I want to say it's a hundred and seventy-eight, a hundred and eighty thousand dollar difference.
What he received, what he received from us in January was a two hundred and sixteen thousand dollar increase.
But then that reduced, right?
To one fifty-eight now, and that's if FinCon was one fifty-eight.
One fifty, okay.
So, the, the budget document that was created, as you just indicated, had level funding from eighteen to nineteen in the budget that went to the select board.
Right.
For the school department.
So that's typically not the final budget, so what, what's happened now, the stage that we're at, is that has now gone to the finance committee. The finance committee is doing all of their interviewing, and, and I would say the night that, that you presented, um, they were clearly, seemed to react favorably to what you had presented, but reacting favorably to everybody's presentations, and then the reality of going to town meeting with a balanced budget are two different things. So right now, I'm aware of the fact that there's a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollar differential in the school line item. I think there are a couple of other departments with much smaller differences, but they're certainly arguing to have those added back in. We have a wild card right now, we're dealing with in terms of the ambulance service, we're in negotiations with the town of Ambrose right now, but we don't even have a number from them. So, we're pretty sure it's not the number that's in the current budget. Of course, anything I'm saying, you know the numbers are going up, they're not going down. We've been working very hard to see what we can squeeze out on the revenue side. The reason I said that, Heather, was I just didn't want there to be any, anybody being lulled into a sense of complacency right now, that we're good to go for town meeting, there's still a lot of, of work to do, and we've got to figure out where we're going to get these monies. So I, that's why, I was just trying to be clear, I didn't want there to be any.
Oh, no, I was glad you were clear.
Yes.
Because it helped us to understand, you know, what the roll-up view was that, that was being examined, and where the, the difference lies.
Yeah.
And plus, I think we vote on our budget next month.
Next month is the public hearing of the budget, and I'm very grateful you brought that up. Honestly, I had no idea. I had no idea that the school department budget was level funded from eighteen to nineteen, and if this, if the select board were to determine that that's what they wanted to proceed, that that's the direction they wanted to take. I think it's also important for the public to understand.
Sure.
That level funded means cuts.
Mm-hmm.
It means cuts.
Right.
Layoffs. So that, that's important for people to understand.
Right, and again, so, so nobody is recommending that we stay there right now, but we also don't have an answer to where the funding is coming from, so that's what I'm just, we're still in a state of flux.
Okay. And so with the new, um, assumptions that are in our budget packet today, the difference that we've got is one thirty-three, eight oh two, is that correct?
One thirty-four, I think.
One thirty-four, okay.
I think it's also important for the public to know that, um, we're losing a lot in those grants.
Yeah.
So that's not, it's, it's things beyond our control that we're losing funding in.
That loss is accounted for in this picture right here.
It is.
Yes.
In the one thirty-four, the loss of grants, although there still is one unknown that we bring up on the back of the sheet, uh, title two A. Now, now, we optimistically budgeted title one and title two A with roughly a forty-five hundred dollar, uh, increase, and, um, there is a chance the title two A may even go away. Um, I did provide, FinCon saw the presentation with a hundred, roughly, let's say a hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollar, uh, increase from FY eighteen to FY nineteen in local contribution. FinCon, you're seeing this summary right now. Um, I'm, I'm not sure until I heard, if I were able to hear from title two A, I, I would want to see if we could get information on that title grant before.
The April.
Before the April, and then, and, and finalizing that number.
Okay.
And of course, I think that should go to the bottom, because the question about circuit breaker reimbursement still hasn't been decided.
So is there anything, uh, I mean, you've presented then the additional, uh, tuition expense that we need to account for. Anything else that you haven't mentioned as far as the unknowns or possibles that...
So the unknowns remain, and for, again, the viewing public, as they weren't necessarily at, at the finance subcommittee, I'll just run through those again. So, um, grant funding, title two A, which could be discontinued, that would be a grant, a reduction in grant funds of roughly thirteen thousand dollars. Our reimbursement rate for circuit breaker, that could be a pleasant surprise, we're budgeting that at sixty-five percent, that could go as high as seventy-five percent. Our cost estimates in special education are based on current IEPs, remember that date I told you, April first? So it's, we, we have the rest of the month where, um, things could happen. Also, um, any student that is in Department of Children and Families custody, DCF has the authority to make unilateral placements, it's not subject to team decision-making, and that includes placements that could pass along cost to districts. We, uh, have, we anticipate thirty-seven students going to, uh, Smith Vocational in total, not new for next year, and, um, we don't have, the town does not have, we don't have an end date for applications, um, but we're assuming, and that doesn't mean everybody who's interested is necessarily going, so we'll be closely monitoring that. The school choice estimates on the cherry sheet, again, our side, um, in terms of school department budget, the things that the school department has control over, um, on the, um, on the revenue side, um, they essentially carry over the numbers from right now, but keep in mind that those numbers include nine graduating seniors of the school choice revenue of forty-five thousand dollars. So if no additional students came in, that cherry sheet estimation would actually be forty-five thousand dollars less than that. We have now had upwards of thirteen inquiries in school choice, so we are, um, certainly hoping that we will, if, do more than even replace the students whom we will leave. More on the town side of things, the cherry sheet estimate around school choice on the sending side does the exact same thing, it just carries over Q two, quarter-two estimates of school choice, or quarter-two actual of school choice in FY eighteen, carries those numbers over. Do you have seniors in that as well? Eight seniors, uh, about forty-three thousand dollars. So, depending if additional students chanced out, that could balance out, or the town could actually be looking at, uh, at expense being less than what it currently is, is on the cherry sheet. And the same thing with charter tuitions, we know we have our current charter enrollments, which is what the estimate is based off of FY eighteen, quarter-two, and those charter enrollments include four seniors at a cost of sixty-four thousand dollars roughly. So, again, it depends, we don't know who will go, but, um, the, the cherry sheet is just that, an estimate.
We don't know if those, those tuition rates are going to stay the same.
The tuition rates, we do have information for charter tuition rates, although, to your point, the, the base tuition for the, for charter schools in general, we, we have, they can estimate for us based on our current students, but if enrollments change, if different students go, remember that calculation that you had, so it depends on, hence the reason, so we have one student right now in a charter school, and that charter tuition is almost twenty-one thousand dollars because of the reimbursement rate based on chapter seventy funding formula. So to your point, you don't know until the children get there.
Thank you, Phil.
Anything else on the budget update for FY eighteen?
No, you have our most up-to-date information.
Yeah, thank you, Molly.
Sure.
For the clarification.
Thank you very much.
Text call.
Right.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Beck, Hopkins Program of Studies, eighteen, nineteen. Did we do this?
Yes, it was.
It was so good, though, we brought it back. It was so popular last month.
All that's up there, um, in terms of, again, coming, because we have not put together, we're doing course registration a little bit differently this year, that, um, our family and consumer science teacher, obviously our electives department chair, has a pretty significant number of people who aren't in a vertical trajectory to provide with, um, provide her with the, um, updates to their course descriptions, and there was some professional development that's been done, uh, and Ms. O'Donohue had update, updated his course descriptions, and they just didn't make it into that additional approval, even if we had, uh, I'd still be bringing this, um, to make sure that that accurately reflected what, what, uh, Mr. O'Donohue plans to do in the curriculum, and then a couple of other teachers just took the opportunity to make some corrections that are very minor. Um, so there just, there's no new courses, there's no changes in anything in terms of credit or anything like that. It's just adding, uh, a few words to some course descriptions for family and consumer science and ninth grade health.
Do we need to hold on this?
To approve that provision, you can still vote on it as, because it hasn't gone in print, as approval of the program of studies for eighteen, nineteen.
Any questions?
Do you have changes?
No questions.
Motion to approve this program of studies for twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen.
All there. Aye. Great. Okay. Next, um, oh, geez, sorry. Let me ask, is that next? Okay. Let me ask, decennial report.
I must admit, this was brutal to read.
Huh?
It was brutal to read.
I'm surprised, almost a hundred pages.
Try chairing one of those teams. Have a sense of empathy for, you know, what the educators who go up to do this. So anyways, it, it's a three-stage process, and although, uh, we've gone through two of those three stages, the self-study, we just recently had our decennial visit, um, the purpose really behind the accreditation process is what comes next. And thankfully, it, in many cases, for a district like ours, is the least, probably the least cost saving, requires the most work on the part of everybody in the community. One of the things that, um, we need to do, uh, is, like every school, in order to remain accredited, we need to engage in a process of continual improvement, and so we'd be looking at various reporting stages, and I'll take you through this very quickly. The objectives for the review of the decennial report are specifically to identify priorities to develop targeted work plans for each recommendation. So I've included in, in your packet, you know, as, just sort of as a starting point in, in my initial read, the things that I consider, just as a principle, you know, in making a unilateral contribution to get things started and sort of sowing seeds, here would be the things that I would start with. However, the Commission on Public Secondary Schools will also put priorities in, and that may include things like special progress reports, and those are things, um, there's a, a letter that's included as a sample, which is the decennial report coming back with a special progress report, to provide you with an example of how the Commission on Public Secondary Schools can have an impact on that, um, follow-up process. The faculty, obviously, is going to give input, um, as well as the follow-up committee, um, as well as the school committee, and, uh, so that's part of the reason why I included that, is I wanted to ask you for input, um, and if not tonight, I'd like to have the opportunity for you to, um, email me, um, so that I can share that information with the follow-up committee. So, when you're sitting there on a Sunday, and, and you don't really have a lot to do, and the first thing that comes to your mind is, I'm going to grab that hundred and thirty-two page document that those nice folks wrote, and, uh, I'm going to share my thoughts with Brian, so that he can share it with his faculty. The accreditation process, the ten-year process, so a school receives the decennial report, uh, we have five years to complete the report and Commission on Public Secondary Schools' highlighted recommendations over the course of those five years. The standard progress report, uh, progress reports that are submitted by every school are submitted at the two-year and the five-year marks in that accreditation process, so that the commission, even if they're not requiring specials, they don't want schools to become complacent, they want to make sure that they can see that schools are still making progress. The suggested progress is for about one-third of the recommendations be, to be completed by the two-year progress report, and that every year, we have to submit what's called an annual information report that includes substantive change. For example, if, say, you know, we had a massive reduction in positions, or, you know, something happened to the building or something like that, we would have to include that in the substantive, substantive change report. Every report that we get back from CPSS provides our accreditation status, either continued accreditation, continued accreditation with warning in identified standards, and those come with specials, um, or continued accreditation to show cause for probation. For us, our timeline, we reviewed, um, our report was reviewed by CPSS last weekend at their meeting. The report of the CPSS review should be returned to us typically, it's four to five weeks before CPSS gets the reports back to the schools after their most recent meetings, um, and decennials can, can take, you know, upwards of four weeks, whereas schools that are just looking for a one item special progress report, they can get back to them very quickly. And any special progress reports is, is included in the letter, I would anticipate for us that we would be including our updated core values, beliefs, and learning expectations as part of a special progress report. I attended a follow-up seminar last Friday, uh, March sixteenth, with Eric Sednik and Deb Louser, um, who will assist me in, in putting together a follow-up committee, and the roles of the follow-up committee are included in that letter, and that's just an item that we took out from that, um, from that seminar. And then, the, um, the follow-up committee will review the school's response to each report, and a faculty member, or a community member, or a parent, um, somebody other than me will also sign off on our written responses that we provide to CPSS. Oh, my God, there we go, sorry.
See, that's a quick distillation.
Yeah.
[laughing].
And, um, so are there any questions in general on the, on the process?
No.
And, uh, for each of the recommendations in the report, there are really only four responses that a school can give, which is completed, in progress, or, um, no action, or rejected. And so it's, it's typically, um, one of the first two, either completed or in progress, and there are certainly schools that at the five-year mark, you know, still are likely to have one or two items that are still in progress, and, um, they'll move them on to the decennial typically, unless some of those things are really at the heart of what has caused a, a school to struggle and not necessarily make improvements in the meantime, so. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, um, just a question, the, so the three options, completed, in progress, and rejected, those are qualifiers that we use to respond?
Yes, yes, exactly. So, for, for a particular item, um, you know, there's a particular recommendation in the report, complete the development of school-wide learning expectations with a targeted level of measurable, um, achievement. And, um, so, let's say that comes in as a special progress report.
Yeah.
That's something that by the end of this school year, uh, with the work that we're doing currently, and I'll, I'll add this in here, that we should be able to respond to that, um, by providing them with an actual copy of the document and saying, completed.
Completed, okay, got it.
So, and then, for next year, in that process, they might ask for the tools to measure it, we'd respond in progress, and they would probably respond by sending us a one item special progress report to say, give us the time, give us your work plans, to provide us an idea of when you're going to have this part of the process finished. And so they, they, they apply pressure, um, having been unserved on the commission for six years, um, they've pared things down to really target special progress reports to a minimal number of items, understanding that in particular, schools have an enormous amount of pressure to go through improvement processes that are put on them by the state, um, local organizations, pressures to, I mean, across New England, groups and organizations, municipalities are combining to regionalize, and all of those different pressures really required NEAS to take a look at the improvement process that they have in place, really has to have targeted leverage.
Right.
And so, you know, we'd be looking at special progress reports from time to time, as would any other school, but it, you know, those specials won't be things that will inundate our, our work, it will allow CPSS to have an impact on, on where our improvement priorities are going to be placed in those work plans.
So in thinking about, like, our retreat this summer, and then focusing on, um, this aspect of the district vision and goals and, and long-term planning, if we were to try to think of, okay, at what point do we want to say these things are completed, or in progress, or if there are any that are rejected, what's kind of the, the timeframe that, that we're working?
But for the most part, most schools are able to work their way through that five-year process and then you're beginning the process of engaging in a self-study. By that time, a school should have, this school has had a regular, a regular cycle of review of its core values, expectations, or mission and expectations, as it had been in the past, and its academic and civic and social learning expectations about every five years. So even though we'll have these developed, we, you know, we need to stick to a cycle of really regular review of those as a school community, so.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
And you're still on the dot.
Okay.
Okay, it's a school strategy and improvement plan update. We talked about that?
No, he has a couple things for you, sorry.
We didn't talk about that.
Nope.
Sorry. School strategy and improvement plan update.
So this is just a brief update on progress that's been made. We're appreciative of the leadership, in particular, of so many members of the faculty and so many students in the school who have made contributions, as well as Dr. McKenzie and those who have provided, those who have gone out and done a significant amount of professional development, in particular, in the areas of social justice and equity and helping us to address those issues and concerns. In particular, in focusing on what we anticipate again will likely be a special progress report item, that the faculty this year, we had developed two, a civic and a social expectation from last year that were similar to what had previously existed in the school's school-wide learning expectations. We began this year by looking at some research and asking the question about how it aligned with our current expectations. And then subsequently, asking each educator to start with themselves, what is it that you value most about education? What to you are the most important parts of what we do here at school? So asking people to start with their own core values, just so that we could see what commonalities we might have collectively as a faculty and staff. Students, we facilitated discussions, the entire faculty facilitated discussions, where students were able to give some anecdotal information in the first response, you know, what is it that they value about education was the question. And there were some prompts to rephrase that for students. We gave them a glossary and so forth of terms. And then we gave them a list of items and asked them to just, rather than rank order them, you know, or pick one through three, just try to check off, you know, two, three, four of the phrases in the following categories that mattered to them. And so we provided those results, and this will go back to the faculty as well. This was compiled by school council about a month ago. So we did this in February, and so these are ready to review as well. And so category one really is the things that we look at that should drive our culture or be reflected in every aspect of our culture. And you can see that students overwhelmingly selected respect. That what educators should commit to, students also overwhelmingly selected travel and field trips. But also clearly identified real-world connections, opportunities to pursue personal interests, working with peers. And then one of the ones that's interesting is looking at what students identified as the most important commitments that they make as students. Because typically, statements of core values, you ask contingency groups to make commitments to, or to identify things that they believe they should commit to. And it was really impressive to see that students really identified some really sharp things in here really consistently. That students seem to effectively manage time, which will be an important consideration as we go into having some Dialogue Friday with them after viewing the movie Screen Ager. That students should be motivated to do well was the second, or sorry, was third. And the second choice was that they should have clear plans and goals for their future. So to have an entire student body identify those things in consensus as the top three items, it's pretty clear that there's solid peer pressure here in the school where we can make those as statements, or we can take those student statements and convert them into something that we can demonstrate or show students in our postings and hopefully in our culture and in our climate, that these are things that students should be living by and carrying forth as examples. And then in just a couple of days, we have two years of notes from prior forums that we held in preparation for the self-study, which faculty still has used in the prior process. And then I'll be putting out a survey, which I believe should be released on Friday on Google Forms, specifically focused for parents on questions about rigor and academic learning expectations that they have, so that we can do something similar, although much more pared down that we did with students, and try to get parent feedback specifically on what the expectations that they have for their students in terms of their academic experiences.
When would you be targeting that parent outreach?
I'm hoping to release it Thursday or Friday of this week, because I'd like to get it into the hands, leave it open for a little bit more than a week, maybe about ten days, and then with Google Forms, you know, we can compile it very quickly, to be able to get it into the hands of faculty for our professional development day, when then we would have all of the input that we need, focus back on our research, look back at our own individual core values, and hopefully, you know, be in a position on that day to make some decisions and put together a draft for voting at the faculty level.
Is there any chance that we could see a copy of those questions, the drafts, for parents? Because as we're drafting our survey up for parents, we want to try to avoid survey fatigue and repetition of information and stuff.
Sure, absolutely. Well, when are you guys looking to put out your survey?
You don't really have a target date yet.
It will be probably till May, because we'll need to write questions.
It won't be Friday. So Keith, you'll have it in advance, because it will be released. But again, it's going to be very targeted. It's not going to be a comprehensive survey. We want it to be something that's quick but thoughtful. Just in looking at, you know, I'd like to put out in the email, here are our current academic, civic, and social expectations, and we need to revise in particular our academic expectations. That's not that we're not going to ask for input on our civic and social expectations, but our specific focus is, we want to hear from parents about what they think the school should be focusing on, at least over the next five to ten years, in terms of what we should have as school-wide academic expectations. So it'll focus there, probably be looking at something from ten to, I think it's twelve questions right now. And so I'm hopeful that it's going to be very quick. And so if that's something that you could integrate into what you have as well.
Well, they can avoid it. So we'll make sure that they get a copy of the survey.
Yes, exactly. So we'll give you the data, is what I mean.
Because when you say it's focused and targeted, you're saying the question's not necessarily the recipient's, right?
Well, the recipients are only going to be H A parents.
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Just Hopkins.
Tara and Keith would need it. They're also the survey committee and they don't have children in H A, so they need an actual copy of the survey.
Okay, great.
Great, thank you.
And so for some reason, you know, we've gone past it. By the time we get to April, it should be compiled, so that might be one of those things that you asked me to bring to the meeting or forward to you guys beforehand.
Absolutely.
Other things that have really been completed, and this is a whole group of people, this really started with student leadership, faculty leadership, and in working with the superintendent and other members of the faculty, that we held an October assembly to put in place a faculty reporting network from the prior year. In that assembly with students, while we released some information and some documents and put an initial reporting form in place, we also did some follow-up on how that form and the process could be best expressed to students, so that they were able to identify people with whom they felt comfortable, if for some reason, I mean, not everybody feels comfortable going and seeing their teacher specifically, not everybody feels comfortable going and seeing me, not everybody feels comfortable going and seeing a counselor that maybe they've only seen up in front of their classroom and they haven't had personal conversation. So we identified some people who, at each level of the school, school-wide, high school and middle school, are people who are known to be identified by other students as being people that any student in the school could feel comfortable going to see, to help them fill out a report of something. And that report can either be anonymous or, you know, really dealing with any kind of issues that they see in terms of harassment, bullying, really to cultivate bystandership and ensure that students aren't out there really holding on to information that they should be bringing forward to help us improve the climate and culture of the school and make sure that students are supported. And then after that, after those revisions were done, we held another assembly in February where we clearly posted all of those around the building and sent out a second email to students so that they have an understanding of how to access that network. And so that, you know, that process is completed and will be ongoing from the perspective of constant revision. In terms of social justice and equity, there's a long list here that's in the summary of work that's been done, and that's just this year. We had great, a great presentation from Basilea Zino regarding educating our students on the Syrian refugee crisis. And then connected with Ayem Malala, that we had guest speakers from Pakistan, Afghanistan, Chad, and Kazakhstan that who came in to speak with our students about what education is like in other parts of the world, which was really eye-opening for our students. They asked, I thought, excellent questions. I thought they did a great job of helping these people to feel comfortable coming in and just sharing something with us that many of our students really don't have any understanding of. And that was followed in December with the Diversity Club's Eat for Education program tied to the school-wide read Ayem Malala. And then on January twentieth, in between the Boys and Girls varsity basketball games and Saturday, the hashtag #recognizesexism campaign was unveiled. Just recently, a couple of weeks ago, we had an end-of-day activity schedule where we engaged with students in dialogue as faculty around issues of equity in general, although it was designed by the Gender Equity Club. We covered topics that included not just sexism, but issues of racism, discrimination, stereotyping. And, you know, I thought the, certainly, my group was in here and I had a really nice time and was really pleased with the group of seventh graders that I had and how really thoughtful and knowledgeable they are about quite a few things. And it was actually pretty inspiring for me to have a sense that they have a much stronger understanding than I would have given them credit for. And then Amy Lanham has put together an Issues of Gender Equity Lunch series, hosted for both middle school and high school students separately on a voluntary basis. And you can see the summary in your packet of the topics, that there's one, there's a different one each week for the month of March. And then right now, we are tentatively planning on April thirtieth and May twenty-first as gender equity activities to roll out further the social norms marketing campaign to assist in the culture of the school. Another item from the school improvement plan is grade-level progress monitoring teams that this has implemented. Last year, over the last two years, that the middle school has met once a week, one week they do seventh grade, one week they do eighth grade. So every other week, they meet to discuss students that, about whom they might have concerns, to help identify supports for those students. And that model really has been effectively translated to the high school. And although the meetings are held after school, one of the things that we found is we need to find a way to cultivate a higher level of teacher participation in those. There are a number of meetings that had been scheduled already at the start of the school year, while we kept them on Wednesday. That's not to say that there couldn't be a 504 meeting or an I U P meeting that might happen that day. So it's going to take some creative scheduling for us to make sure it's not just Angie Cullen and our lead guidance counselor, our school psychologist and other folks there, but that we have many more teachers who are able to participate in that process, because the contributions that we get from everybody there in the room are really valuable in terms of helping students move forward and overcome some of the challenges that they And then the final item that I wanted to share with you is focusing on making improvements in middle school mathematics. And really, the reason you ask, you know, why the focus on middle school mathematics has to do as much as anything with our MCAS scores in the middle school over the last couple of years. We looked at myself, the eighth-grade math teacher, and the seventh-grade math teacher really have done a great job over the last couple of years at taking those results and turning them into what I think are meaningful changes. Basically, taking a look at the 2017 results, that we had a lower-than-desired student growth percentile with only thirty-nine percent of our students in grades, in grade seven, meeting or exceeding expectations in the eighth grade last year. Student growth percentile was thirty-six, with students meeting or only fifty-one percent of students meeting or exceeding those expectations. By contrast, in grade ten, a sixty-two point five student growth percentile, with students in the categories of proficient or advanced at eighty percent. So.
Can I add one clarifying point here? Just to remember, remember grade seven and eight are next-generation MCAS, that the state anticipated a fifty-fifty split on that, so eighth grade was closer to what the state anticipated. Certainly, we want our students to go beyond the state expectation, but I want to put that in grade ten is what's called legacy MCAS. So you are also comparing two different MCASs.
And then so in 2016 results, grade seven had a median student growth percentile of fifty-four, with sixty-six percent of the students meeting or exceeding expectations. Grade eight, nineteen for a student growth percentile, with only thirty-eight percent of the students meeting or exceeding expectations. And again, by contrast, grade ten, sixty-one point five as a median student growth percentile, with eighty-five percent of the students in proficient or advanced. And so for the math teachers, they really wanted to focus on, what is it that we can do to turn these scores around to improve student growth? And so we've taken a look at a number of things over the course of the year. The primary sources that we started with were, these teachers took a really close look and did a really thorough analysis of three years' worth of the MCAS results, broke them down not just by strand but also by problem type, as well as the concepts that were being addressed in each of those types of questions. They went further to begin the process of aligning their course unit exams, so by the time they finish a unit, their course exams are also aligned with MCAS questions, MCAS testing. And then over the, this is the second year where we've implemented quarterly cumulative exams. And part of the reason that we wanted to do that was, we wanted some, we wanted to have an idea of how things are being, how math concepts are being retained. So something is taught in a unit in September. By the time they get to November, how well do students remember that? In particular, if it's not a foundation skill that's applied in a later unit, it might not come until December. It really informs the teacher as to what they might do better in terms of reinforcing that. Math being a language, we want to make sure that students have an opportunity to be able to speak that language as frequently as possible. And so if something's taught as a discrete unit and it's not necessarily reinforced, we can identify the impact of that well before we get to a hugely cumulative exam like the MCAS exam, which comes later on in May. So it's really provided us with good data. And those, the teachers worked really hard to align those exams with, those quarterly exams with the previous three years' worth of MCAS questions. And also had taken the time to look at our online I X L program, which gives us immediate feedback in mathematics, and they also took a look at that current I X L data. So one of the things that they did this year that was very different than in prior years was they made pretty substantial adjustments in curriculum, in particular with regard to pacing. In both the seventh and eighth grade, coming to the realization that we could move our students harder and faster without necessarily burying them so much in work, they reduced the amount of time at the beginning of the year that they spent on review activities from the prior year. And what that allowed us to be able to do was to sink faster into the current curriculum and move faster through that. So pacing over the course of this year has been better, just by starting off a little bit more rapidly than they have in prior school years. Again, the development of the quarterly exams, and I think the big thing this year that we hope will serve students, the school, and families well, is the development of every single student to this point in the school year, which is from the prior year. And what that allowed us to be able to do was to sink faster into the current curriculum and move faster through that. So pacing over the course of this year has been better just by starting off a little bit more rapidly than they have in prior school years. Again, the development of the quarterly exams and I think the big thing this year that we hope will serve students, the school, and families well, is the development of every single student to this point in the school year, which is almost three-quarters of the way through the school year. There is enough data for each of the teachers to have created one of these for every student in grade seven and every student in grade eight, which identifies those strands that we saw in prior testing years that these, this current group of students needs more support in. And so what they did was create individual iXL profiles. And it starts off, if I'm not mistaken, the first six in grade eight are graduating class-wise. So the entire, identified across the entire eighth grade. And then the remaining items in your sample are individual to this particular student as identified as strands. And again, they're aligned with the MCAS test, they're aligned with our curriculum, they're aligned with our unit exams. And it provides us with a huge number of advantages. They set an achievement target of 80% and the primary reason is to give students an opportunity, when they get a question wrong on iXL, it drops their percentage. It almost works a little bit like a video game where you need to achieve that 80% score, but it gets increasingly sophisticated as you go along. For the most part, until you get to complex open response questions, the MCAS tests and you really need to get up toward pre-AP and advanced placement exams to get up, up above the types of questions that exist above 80%. And so for iXL, that 80% target puts us in a good range where we can confidently say that a student has a much better understanding and has had sufficient practice in that concept, that they should do far better on these exams and have had enough reinforcement to be better prepared for the MCAS test. It provides extensive practice and the, the reason that we used iXL really is twofold. Provides extensive practice in that computer-based testing format, so our students are going to be tested in ELA, math, and science this year in grade seven and eight in the computer-based testing format. So this gives them exactly the same type of format as they see. They answer the question. In this particular case, what's different is it tells them whether they got it right or wrong, but it moves them on to the next question. So it's very similar to the format. And then for us, as students are working on it, we get immediate data on what the student is doing and that allows us, again, to continue the process of making adjustments to instruction. I know in Mr. Green's class, if he sees that a student is struggling on it as he, as he monitored, he can actually see their score going down, that's, he'll get up and go see the student and ask them, intervene immediately in the classroom. You can see that in the accreditation report, that individual type of intervention and support from our students, because of the size of our school and the quality, the relationships that our faculty has with our kids is a huge strength. So pulling all of those things together and combining it was something that, you know, over the course of a couple of years is really thoughtful and really well-aligned and hopefully will yield, you know, results for our students this year in the middle school.
Thank you. Your name's first.
Good, Brian. Thank you.
Okay. Student Council reports.
The ATS Student Council, I just have something to, to give you an update on. They finished their playground equipment survey. A lot of effort into this. So big love of swings. So we are taking-
Did they test them out?
No, no, they made their recommendations and they are swings and pumps, sufficient pumps on the equipment cart. This is a big problem. Switch balls are a huge problem. And they don't work. So they're going to put plenty of pumps on the cart and they are going to recommend swings and the PTO is willing to investigate what kind of swings they might be able to investigate. That's my update.
There's swing committee?
There will, there may be. There may be a swing committee.
There will be rank quoting.
Yes. I'd figure out where my swings, that's a staple playground. Yeah. All right. Personnel report.
And you have two long-term substitutes in your personnel report and that's the only thing to report.
Okay. Chris, Business Manager report.
Okay. So we had a number of transfers. You will notice that when you look at the account balances and the percent used, we had substantially higher numbers in a lot of these areas. Those have been reduced, a lot of the overages have been zeroed out, for lack of a better term. And we will continue to do this. Basically, at this point, we are shuffling money within the budget to just offset certain accounts that are over. And we have some accounts that are obviously short or, or the expenses are short, so we're just moving that money over. If I need to move any of accounts that require your approval, which would be moving things from, say, a supply line to a salary line, I will bring them forward. So far, none of my transfers have required that approval. We did notice a glitch, actually. It's a good news glitch, but when I was reviewing all of the open purchase orders, a lot of times, we have purchase orders for the entire year. So say for something like legal services, we take the full amount of our contract with Fred and we just, every month, we send the bill and we take that off of the open PO. And so I was reviewing those with Mary and I asked her, why are these payments not coming off of the purchase order that's opened? And she said, well, they are. And she held out the purchase order and there, every month she writes, you know, the, the date, the payment was made and the amount. And when we looked in the accounting software, it did show that same purchase order number, yet for some reason, the amount encumbered did not reduce. So as a result, what we're showing is, we're showing the expense for the account and what's supposed to happen is, when you post an expense, it reduces the amount of the open purchase order. This was not the case. I, I emailed them to ask them to take a look at it. So, I mean, the good news about this is that it's actually showing that we have less money than we do, which it's certainly showing, it's better to show that than to show, you know, make us think we have more money and then all of a sudden hit us with it. It's only in a couple of purchase orders. It wasn't across the board or anything, which is even more strange. So we're, we've asked them to take a look at it and, you know, I will let you know what was found, but we did, I think electricity was another one where we've spent about, I think we spent $58,000 so far this year. That's from July through last week. And somehow, we still have $83,000 encumbered for the last three or four months of the year. Obviously, seems highly unlikely we're going to use that much. So that was another one where, for whatever reason, it just did not reduce the amount. So we'll be chasing those down, obviously, and, you know, making the corrections. That's going to be something that we can't do ourselves. We're going to need them to WebEx in, take a look at it, and, and they're going to have to make some kind of a correction, you know.
In the software?
Programming-wise, I guess, more than anything else, so.
So the percent used here will be adjusted when that error, that problem in the accounting software has changed?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Right, so as the encumbrance goes down, or actually, yeah, it is adjusted, the percent used should-
That's right.
So this will be different. Okay. All right.
We just, of course, I printed all of these off and then I came over here and they're still sitting in the printer. So I'm kind of going, going off of the 178-page package we have here.
Page 163 is ready.
Yes, just arrived there. So this is the grant report. As you can see, a substantial number of the grants have now been used in full, which is certainly our goal. Again, these were part of the transfers. If you remember, a few months back, I said that we'd be kind of monthly making transfers to things like the 240 grant rather than hit them all at once. That has now been fully utilized. Circuit breaker, we have a little more that we'll be able to use, but basically, we'd like to carry over pretty close to this amount. So that's, that's pretty much fully utilized as well. You have something like that Title II-A at the top of the page. It's $23 remaining. Title I and Title II-A, usually in March, will send us either a revised amount upward or downward. We were the lucky recipients of an additional $23 in that grant. And so, you know, that will now be applied as well. And we, I think we got, it was $68 in Title I, so that, again, will be applied.
We should probably schedule a meeting to decide first.
Yeah, yeah. When we have lots of time to, I'm sure it'll take a while.
Pumps and, yes.
Pumps and swings. Yes, yes. So are there any questions about the grant accounts? No?
Okay. Lunch.
Please.
Right. Once again, further explanation is needed. That's right. I see. All right, just a glaring list of-
Annie, you want to take this one?
Hi, no, I'm just going to wait for an explanation. With optimism and-
You know, I have to say-
Chris might have to walk out. Optimism and patience. Do tell.
You know, this killed me. It goes every month. So, yeah, you know, again, the, the payments have been coming later, for whatever reason, from the state, which means that the February payment, I, I think, might not have even been received yet. I know the January payment was received, well, I'm, it's not posted in here, but I don't even know if it's been received yet. And I know the January payment was received on February 28th. So for whatever reason, they're really slow in that. Be that as it may, you know, every year, I typically transfer typically around $30,000 of the Food Services Director's salary back into the local budget. I cannot tell you that we won't be doing that again because I certainly believe, even, you know, if we applied the, the revenues from the state, that would put us back in the positive, but it's not a healthy, robust account balance. You can see in July, we had $19,000. You know, we wouldn't be sitting on that in July if it wasn't for the $30,000 transfer that was done last year. So, you know, I'll be expecting to do another one of those. I like to wait till June. I have to say, I'm tempted to do it now just to erase that negative so that someone next to me will-
You should say that.
Are we going to be looking at an increase?
Excuse me?
Are we going to be looking at an increase again of-
Of the, the lunch prices?
Yeah.
We'll have to look into that. There's a report that we have to file with the state to show that we're keeping up with, you know, basically inflation and what their idea of price increases are in line with. Typically, we do that every year and we either need to or we don't need to do one. So I'll contact Diane Zach. We can take care of that. The other accounts, you know, just an FYI with the Athletic, when you can see the revolving account there has dropped from about $22,000 to $9,000. And the reason for that, again, is that the scoreboard was put up in the gym. I believe that was around $11,000 itself. So, you know, that's certainly put a little dent in the account, although still, you know, we're, we're in good shape there. That's basically all there is to really discuss. I don't know if you have any questions on that? The next item is the school air conditioning project. So there's, there's good news and bad news. The bad news is that, again, the prices came in higher than the amount of money we had. The good news is that we have enough money to do two of the three wings. And I've highlighted the low bids for each portion, the electrical contractor and the general contractor. The prices in the general contractor, let me, let me just do the math here quickly. No, I'm sorry, they don't, they're, they're not included in there. But we, we do have enough, you know, to, we'll take out Alt 1, which was doing the cafeteria, and Alt 2 was taking out the cafeteria and one of the wings. So we can get a good portion of that done. I think we have around $370,000 remaining in the account. The total price would be $338,000, so we're okay there.
So Chris, that $338 includes what? The electrical and the general contractor?
Yes, it does.
For two wings?
The general contractor's bids came in a week after, actually, two weeks because we had a snow day. It came in after the electrical and as an amendment to the whole bid process, when we opened the electrical bids, we saw who was the low bidder and sent out an amendment to all of the spec holders saying, all right, this is your electrical contractor, so figure this into your price. So when they submit a price, they already knew who the electrical contractor would be and-
So how do I read this? If I were to do the entire, it would have been $580?
That's correct. Yes.
So, so if we were to do the entire, then it would have been a different bidder that would have had the low bid?
Yeah, it's, it's one of those-
Spacing pieces that we're doing.
That, that's exactly right. Yeah, TJ Conway would have been the low bidder if we did the entire project, but because we can't do the entire project, the actual low bid for the portions that we will be doing is climate heating and cooling, so.
So taking out the cafe is what the price in Alt 1 is?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. So Alt 2, so it's basically $580 minus the 91?
That's right, yes.
Winds up being what we chose on? Or no, I'm sorry, Alt 2 minus 150 for taking a wing off?
Right.
So will it be two wings and a cafeteria? So how, how do I?
We'll, we will do two wings. And we'll take off the cafeteria and one wing.
So, so the bid award, but, so the- The amount, the first column is everything. And your recommendation is to go with climate heating and cooling?
That's correct.
And to do two wings only?
Right.
Is there, how does two wings to do? I think there is one that's hot, generally hotter.
I don't believe so, but the goal is to get the wing that has the preschool, basically the younger kids in it. I guess, not that the older kids get any, or stay any cooler or anything, but, you know, they're just, the younger you are, you, you can't really have it as hot. So that's, that's the goal. After that, it, it, it's not really that one wing is any hotter than the other, you know, they're all, they all get sun different times of day and-
Well, don't they use that preschool wing for summer programs too? I think that's where they usually host them.
We're taking off this and this.
By this and this, you mean?
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
We're taking off Alt 1 and Alt 2.
Off of the amount, which results in $338?
Yes.
Which is the lowest bid.
Yeah.
Which means our 400, what is our?
The, the amount for that would be $338 and change. So we've used about roughly $30,000 for the diagram, you know, all of the plans to be drawn up and the bid specs to be written, all of that. So, you know, we still have obviously enough money to do that. I did ask them, because, you know, to, to finish the job at this point, we'd obviously have to go, again, for additional funding at, at some point in the future.
And that supplemental amount would be, just to be clear, if, would be what, what amount?
The, the amount we'd need to get?
Yeah, to, to go-
It would be about, say, 210.
Or less than 250. Well, if we went with the 550 and we have 370 left, right, it would be less than 200. But that's if we had all the money in hand, which we don't.
Right, which we don't.
Imagine you go on that again, you might get closer to the 580 bid, so it's going to be a little over 200 we, we need remaining, right?
Yeah, I mean, if, if you just add the price of Alt 1 and Alt 2.
Right.
You know, we have anywhere from, you know, you're looking at climate, Alt 1 and Alt 2 are, you know, I'd say 240,000, 241,000.
It's interesting, though, the TJ Conway's, yeah, it's so much cheaper.
It, it's odd the way they bid on these things because Alt 1, you can see how the rest of them, we're anywhere from 87,000 to 94,000, you know, so they're all fairly close. And that 58,000, Alt 1 for TJ Conway is what, you know, it's, it's a low amount. We would hope that if we were to go out to bid again for the next section of it, we'd like that kind of an amount bid for us, but-
I guess, Demask, I don't understand the math. You deduct Alt 1 and Alt 2 from TJ Conway, 553. It's not 352. So you must, there must be some other calculation.
553 minus 143 is about-
Because they're not taking as much off.
About 410.
I guess it would be, and then you take 58 on.
Yeah.
You have a bigger savings not doing the cafe with the climate heating and cooling versus TJ Conway.
And I did have that discussion with TJ Conway. He called and asked, are you going to do the whole job or just that amount? And I said, you know, unfortunately for him, no, we can't do the whole job, which he knew immediately meant that his bid was not the low bid for what we were going to do.
All right. So what's the timing on that? That's a summer project, right?
It's definitely a summer project. I was told it would- It's definitely a summer project, I was told it would, it would take a couple of months to do, so it's going to be one of those things where, basically, right when school gets out, they need to get in here and get this going.
I have a question. Does it make sense to, um, proceed forward with, uh, a recommendation at this juncture that would not include the cafe, but then, um, you know, the project's starting in the summertime anyways, um, is, is there some way to make up that shortfall between now and then, and decide in the summer that, hey, while we have the whole crew out there, economies of scale suggest that it makes sense to do, do it right the first time, rather than invite everybody out again and have...
The problem with that, well, there's, I guess, there's two, there's a challenge of actually, you know, getting the funding for it, but the problem is that it would then switch the low bid from climate heating and cooling to TJ Conway, and, you know, you, you couldn't just make that switch, obviously, you know, on the fly in the summer, because...
Cause in the lowest, your vote, which I didn't give you the absolute correct language, your vote, you have to recommend, whomever you recommend is the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, and, and then, if you did that, as Chris just said, climate heating is not the lowest responsive and responsible, so you'd be, you have to do it effectively, even if that feels summer interesting.
We couldn't seek out the other 58 and award part, uh, one part to the other?
Boy, I don't even know, that's...
I don't know the answer to that question.
It's a good question, actually.
Are there, how much?
Cause it's just kind of the inverse, right, of pricing just the cafe, which we...
Oh, I see.
We priced not doing the cafe, backing that out, you know?
Yeah, right now, we're looking at, we probably have, you know, roughly 25 to 30,000 dollars remaining in the funds we have, um, so we would still have to, you know, come up with more. The other side, of course, is that I just don't know, when they took out 58,000, you know, as part of their overall bid, I don't know if that necessarily means that if they came back in to just do that...
Right.
...they would be 58,000 dollars.
Which is why I'm wondering what the incremental cost would be to do it right the first time, because bringing out a crew a whole summer time...
Absolutely.
Is going to cost a whole lot more.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's probably 250,000 dollars, and if we have 30,000, so...
Right.
We're going to have to go back to the town and ask for...
So, I'm wondering if we're being short-sighted by leaving it off, or, you know, what?
Well, the question is, do we want to go to the town and get on the town warrant for the pay?
And the, the difference between what we have and what we would need is?
200, 210?
Um, yeah, I guess it would be, uh, it would be 553, and so it'd be almost two, well, 200,000 dollars, yeah.
I know, this is nowhere near, this is probably insanity, I guess I'll just put it out there, that tri board could think about it. Uh, is this an example of a one-time capital cost instead of a recurring cost that, um, the excess stabilization might be good, but to good use on? Could, could there, are there stabilization funds that exist for, uh, capital needs? Is that making sense? We talked about that there are some stabilization funds for capital and equipment, is there an existing stabilization fund for capital that could be funded at a higher level that this would fit into?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know, just throwing that out there, cause that statement was made.
Is that something that could be asked and answered before we would have to vote on who to give this contract to?
Uh, what did our bid doc say about award? Did it say in the RFP document?
It, it did, I, I think we actually have time to do it, I, I think it was, uh, I think it was three months, actually, that we had, but I, I'll have to, I'll have to go back through and look.
Have you talked to David about these bids? I'm just curious if he has any judgment?
Well, I, I talked to him after the first batch, because, you know, of course, we had gone to bid before, and we just had it as in all, all areas done, and, you know, we were just nowhere near, um, where we needed to be.
So, that's a good question. I guess the most important thing is, if, if you recall in the, in the request for bid, the RFP document, if we, if it is that we, if, if the expectation was that prices would hold fast for 90 days, and, um, then the school committee would have time to vote it at the April meeting, and we could certainly show them to David and even contact the IG's office, although I think we do, I can't wrap my head around how you would, what you stated, which is logical, but I just can't wrap my head around how it would match with procurement laws.
I'm trying to wrap my head around how one keeps a building cool, but then the biggest, most sizable part of the building is hot, and how that does not, um, pose some energy challenges, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I'm sure it does, I mean, you know, the cafeteria doesn't get used a lot, well, it does during the school year, though, I mean, really, the whole building does get used a lot during the summer, so...
Well, and this is the whole reason why we're putting this in, is for the school year.
Yeah.
And that cafeteria door could be open, I mean, which, uh, yeah, I just, it seems, uh, it seems like it could, um, maybe bite us in the long run if we, um, uh, in terms of electricity usage for maintaining this air conditioning system.
I'm trying to find it now.
We definitely are going to have to increase our electricity budget for next year.
Well, I like the idea of asking about, um, whether there are stabilization funds for capital needs that would cover doing the whole project, the difference that we're seeing here.
Right.
Um, it would maybe be good to know, what is, I mean, if, if we had to go with two wings only, understanding what that means by way of usage over the summer months, where those two wings might be cooled? Like, are we doing ourselves a disservice because there's a lot of usage of the cafe during those? I, I just have no idea.
Mm-hmm.
Or isolate, like, can you close that off so that you aren't, you know, like, cooling your house and leaving the door open, basically?
Yeah.
And was the plan to use the air conditioning during the summer months? In all of those wings?
Uh, not in all of those ones, we would make sure that we ran our special education programs in a wing, in a single wing, there's plenty of classrooms, the special education programs are very small, so, and for the most part, they're already operating classrooms that are using their own independent air conditioners, yeah.
Okay.
So, if we do that, can we wait until April, then, or you're checking?
So, I'm, I'm going to look, yeah.
You can go on to talk about your school committee report, and we'll find in the bid document, um, where it indicates the, the amount of time that the, when we must award. Okay, all right, please.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, then, yeah, let's move to school committee reports and discussion, uh, so family, community engagement survey, uh, thank you all for getting back to me, I did send you guys an email that Keith and Tara will be heading that up, um, for this round, which will be our, yes, thank you, it'll be our third survey, I think.
That's right.
Um, and I guess a question about timing, Annie, is we can, uh, as I mentioned in the email, get you those questions from the last survey, so that you can have a chance to repeat those, cross-reference them with what Brian was mentioning, do you want to bring a first pass-through to the April meeting to discuss?
They're right here, so we can...
I don't know whether that's too soon. It's, I can, it's up to the committee, I'll put any, I'll be prepared to have anything you would like in.
Remind me of when we were looking to have that report out in general, we were looking for May or June?
Yeah, usually, I think we'd want to deploy the survey in May.
In May.
So that we could discuss the results in June or July, and have them inform our summer retreat.
Mm-hmm.
So, the first pass-through could kind of be like a first read with the policies, where, um, you bring, you know, well, this is the direction we're thinking of going, and this is what's aligned, this is what we think can go, these are the gaps where we think we want to add things. Um, does it require a vote with the questions? So, it could be, uh, you bring it in April, and it's on us to get you feedback by a certain date after that, so that you're able to deploy it in May?
I think that's reasonable.
I think it's still a little, yeah.
Okay.
And we have Brian's Hopkins questions by then?
Yeah, it sounds like, um, you'll have them this week or next week, at the latest, uh, so Mary and I can call our files, I know, I think the last one, you did most of that, yes.
It's on, is it, is it on file?
It must be, it was your survey meeting, so we'd still, it'd still be there, it's the same thing.
Yeah, yes.
Um, okay, great, well, thank you. Um, policy, let's see. Yes, so... We met.
We did.
If I, I, I have a question for you all, what you have is not only the annual review, but every policy that was reviewed, you see all the date that says, uh, your first reading tonight, now, I didn't feel, cause you really would have gone over the edge with, um, the packet would have been a thousand pages long, and we just started real quick.
Very.
Um, so what I can do, cause there goes first reading, second reading, you don't adopt until April, uh, if you want me to, I can include every single one, extract changes. The reason that I did not, is you do have a subcommittee that goes through them, one could argue it kind of defeats the purpose of the subcommittee, if then the entire committee goes through, um, every single document, I can put them in there, that's fine, the revisions are listed here, I will do whatever you like, I refrain from putting, uh, hard copies of every single one in this packet.
And I just have to say that the majority of the revisions were minor language revisions, or to update, um, things for, um, to mask standards, and I don't feel like there was anything, um, that was really big, though, that we want to have a larger discussion, correct me if I'm wrong, Heather?
No, I, I agree with you, um, in addition to language changes and bringing them kind of more current, current language, we also had some, Fred's legal input on, um, a couple of the policies, too, just in, in part of that, um, between Fred and the, um, nurse?
Nurse leader?
Pretty much, uh, going with, you know, predominantly some of the legal language, but getting at the spirit of the nurse leader's comments. Um, trying to think if there was anything...
The only, the only ones I could, that I could possibly think of were the final two in here, the naming of facilities and the memorials.
Yes.
Um, those would be the only two things that I could think of, um, especially with the, the namings of the facilities could, um, have some impact on the fields, um, and the memorials, um, um...
Departure from current...
Yeah, departure from current policy.
Policy. And so I'm absolutely happy to, um, include them all, I'm perfectly happy to do that, I just wanted to ask, and I was sensitive of the fact that we would never get the entire thing scanned in if I did it this time.
I think I'd prefer to see the track changes.
Sure, I would, too.
Yeah, I think, uh, it would make it easier for us to quickly scan and understand and stay current, on top of what those policy changes were.
Yeah, I agree. So, if you send those out, um, outside of this meeting, can that still be considered a first read if we come back in April with questions? Yeah, 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 cause your first read is even, your first read is even just a revision, reviewing the revision, so... Oh, okay. You don't, and then you'll have a, yes, you're perfectly fine, you can do your adoption in April. Okay, and if, and if we need to move that off by a month because there's still outstanding questions, we're, we're okay, is that a one of... Absolutely, yeah, okay.
Just so I understand, is that something that is sent out, so the first reading is sent out in advance, though, not our typical school committee packet?
It's, no, it typically just goes the school committee packet. But I'm happy to send it out, I can ask Sue to send it out this week, is it Monday? It's Monday. Yeah, cause I think it's, would be what we saw, if, if we made any changes, they were minor. Like, I think you saw one where there was some language that hadn't, terminology that it all, but...
Yeah, that did, that didn't, yeah.
Just given the sheer number that are being adjusted, it's good to have them.
Sure. So, May, um, I assume that you're only, I'm only sending you those that had any revisions, committee review revised, so you see on the second page, just so you know, the committee reviewed all of these, but there were no revisions, so I won't include, those are on a different side, yes.
Yeah, that's fair.
Okay. Perfect, happy to do that. Okay, that makes sense. Um, next one is tri board, I think we've beat that one to death, um, all due respect, but no, I, we did go to the tri board meeting, I think the only thing we didn't talk about, um, so far tonight, is the discussion that was around those, um, subgroups that met to, uh, talk about the three positions, HR, IT, and finance, yes, that's right, and so, um, there was continued discussion at the last tri board meeting about what's happening with, whether the town has a recommendation moving forward on those three positions, there was dialogue around, um, select board looking for, well, have we really identified the need, have we identified the job descriptions, have we identified the reporting structures, um, before we seek out the funding, which would be, have to be really through an override for those three positions, had, which the finance committee had presented that as an idea, um, have we thought this all the way through, as to how these positions would fit in, given the current structure of the government and the reporting lines for them? So, that was a lot of the dialogue, there was, um, I guess, really, a, a question about, uh, the comment was made about sharing of resources for finance, that, uh, the perception was we had not given an answer on whether or not we're open to that, um, so, you know, I don't think that that's necess, I don't think it's that we've dodged the question or not given an answer, I think it's, um, I don't know that we've necessarily been at the table as part of those subgroup discussions, so, I don't know what your thoughts are on that, but it's essentially sharing across, between the town and the schools. Right, so this evening, um, you will vote as to, uh, whether or not you want to go out for a request for proposals for business services, uh, the management solution, the company that Chris works for, is that contract ends June 30th of this year, so we do, uh, what we did in 2015 when I was here, you, um, I wrote an RFP, we went to, brought on a request for proposals, we received proposals, and TMS was the proposal that, um, the school committee deemed the most qualified, um, so this isn't a bid, it's a proposal, the most qual- qualified proposer. So, certainly the town, uh, I already sent David a draft copy of the RFP, because I need a letter from David Nixon, he's the chief procurement officer for the town, normally when Chris does bids, he talks with David, obviously, Chris can't do the RFP for business services, um, and I gave him a copy of that, the town could decide that they too wanted to participate in some sort of proposal for business services, so, um, yeah, I, they could certainly choose to participate in that request for services that the school department is doing, that the school committee is doing. Um, yeah, so, does that make sense?
So, is the decision that they could, they could join the same request for proposal, have their own request for proposal?
They could ask to join, to, they could ask to say, um, you know, they could say, "We'd like you to change the following elements, because we'd like to be included," just like when you do a joint bid for trash bags, I'm sorry, there was no analogy intended. I was just thinking of things you go out for...
This thing that came to mind.
When you go out to bid for custodial ser, uh, custodial supplies, so a lot of people can join on the bid, we have a lot of joint bids like that, so they may say, "All right, you know, we need these services, too, so we're going to have to change some of what we're looking for," because it would reflect, right now, the proposal reads, "This is for Hadley Public Schools, the Hadley School Committee is requesting these services," that could change to, "The town of Hadley and Hadley School Committee are requesting these services."
Okay, so, I have a worry. Um, my worry is, would adding the, um, the specific and nuanced needs of a town change the type of vendor that would bid on, I guess it's not a bid, but propose to, um, and therefore, it wouldn't be optimized for the understanding of a school's business versus a town's business? Does that make any sense?
Mm-hmm, it does, it's a great question. But it could, possibly. I don't know whether, you know, agencies like, like yours, Chris, are, you know, nimble to be able to, yeah, it doesn't matter whether it's a, you know, town or a... Yeah, I think, yeah, yeah, sorry. I mean, in general... I don't want anybody to, to call out that there was a unfair proposal practice.
But we should also say that town hasn't shown any interest in doing that, right?
Apparently, it's discussed at tri board. What the town has shown interest in, at, at least, um, the finance committee, is establishing a full-time employee position, which I could see where maybe the impact on our bid process is the length of time that we enter into an agreement with, but the, the length of time as part of that RFP. Length of time, um, how long the contract is for whoever's bidding on this thing, whoever's proposing to us their services, if we're saying it's a one-year contract, because after a year, there's going to be an FTE in the town that would take this on.
And what, uh, how would it work if we enter into a year, um, a, a year contract, and then the town brings in a person to take over those duties, would, would we still be on the hook for the balance?
I think that's what we should coordinate with, with...
I think that's what we should coordinate with, with David.
Because they're talking about going to the town for an override to, to these positions.
So one thing you should.
The finance committee would like to. The select board is, well, I think that they're, they're discussing whether or not they can entertain that and add it to the warrant.
So one thing to be aware of is that the school, a school business official is appointed by the school committee. So it's one of the positions that you appointed the recommendation of the superintendent, but ultimately you either agree with the superintendent's recommendation or you say, we're withholding our approval. The superintendent can't hire without that agreement from the school committee. A finance director from the town is not the same as that.
Yeah, I, I would be worried. Having seen what it's like to be operating this school without a capable and knowledgeable business position, I would be worried about, at least pulling the trigger on any switch. If the town were to go down that road and bring on someone who was highly capable, then we could start working with that individual and see if, in fact, they were highly capable for the school. I would want some kind of overlap and transition to actually see whether that met the needs. But by no means would I, would I say that it's a fait accompli, like, that of course it's going to meet our needs. And it's too important a position for us to predict at this juncture.
So it's almost like, we know we need to renew service, or go out and acquire services. If the town wants to go on to that, that's great. If they do get to a point where they hire an FTE, that after appointing that, or whether that's part of their job description, we understand what that, what the skill set of that physician would be in working with us, then we could.
Slowly get to know and make sure and, and then transition.
Transition it off, yeah.
And currently, we don't even know if that's going to be going to the table, because there still is a divide between what finance is recommending versus what the select board is recommending. So I'm not sure it would be who of us to, could say, going that route when we're up for.
So I like the idea of at least giving, through David, the option of, look, we're going out to bid anyways, or we're seeking proposals anyways. Do you want to, do you want to piggyback on that?
And maybe it's not, what is it, three years? Maybe it's not three years, but maybe it's two years. I, I don't want to go back year after year.
Right.
We'd need, it's going to take them at least a year to get it together. And then we're going to want at least a half a year to transition knowledge and just make sure that these, that the new service is capable of what we need. So I think that we should be conservative about that transition and say two-year proposal.
Does that make sense? Like, just adjusting the length of time with that consideration of, you know, this may be on the horizon?
I'm, I will adjust the proposal as however you'd like me to.
And what is it currently?
Day three?
Three, yeah.
Or have some, some language in there that it could, like, if there's, if this position's coming on after transition period, I wonder, yeah.
With their contracts, you change circumstances?
Usually the, whoever the payer is, is winds up paying some kind of penalty if they're going to end before the full term of the contract, unless there was some kind of, you know, issue that is covered within the contract that you could under justify or reasons, you know.
So is that the assumption this finance person, if employed, would also do the school's finances?
That's the goal, shared, the shared services. Now, there was also mention, though, of potentially going through, and I don't know enough about this, was it HCOG or the council?
Hampshire Council.
Council of Government, whether or not there are services available through that that would help cover this too. And honestly, I don't know whether that's more HR than it is finance.
And I would say when I met with David to ask some questions about the school department budget, he presented to me that this was not about shared services with the schools, that in fact, these positions, that they were looking through HCOG and to share these kinds of services with other towns, so that two municipalities would share a finance director, rather than the school department and the town.
Okay. Well, let's, I mean, then maybe it seems prudent to do what we planned on doing and offer through David the opportunity to get on, to be part of that.
Right.
Yeah.
Keep it at three years so we don't have to do it again anytime soon?
I'd agree, yes.
Okay. So we need to vote on this?
So in this case, if you would just make a motion to, yeah, to do an RFP for school business services for FY19, determine FY19 through FY21.
Motion to go out for proposal for business services from FY19 to FY21.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Fields, Paul?
A big thanks to Florence Bank for their generous $5,000 donation for the fields. So our fundraising campaign is continuing. We will be sending out a contact on the GoFundMe site, so folks can donate online, and we'll be doing more campaigning and outreach.
Great. Okay, CES.
Yes, so since I was last reporting out on CES, they have a board meeting every other month. So the next one is this Wednesday, and at that time, I should have a whole lot more information and update for you. But I've noticed that they held a big social justice conference, they were holding all kinds of workshops and programming, and they continue to provide great services to Hadley.
So two of our teachers went to that conference. I facilitated one of the groups at that conference. It was excellent. Excellent job.
That's interesting. I, I'm curious, when you go to this meeting, one of the things that they featured recently on the Today Show, all things, was cyber civics. And we were talking about, remember, like, digital literacy. It's now it's moved to, okay, cyber civics in terms of the, the breadth of content that's covered that with that, not just, you know, using digital platforms, correct, you know, in the, in the right way, but also learning about the impact of its use, the decision-making, that, you know, the digital permanence. And I just, I thought that was pretty cool. And I don't know whether there's any kind of talk about, you mentioned social justice, but I, this seemed like another new strand.
Absolutely. I would love it if you wouldn't mind sending me what you saw.
Yeah.
Because they are so open to suggestions. In fact, I think you might recall that it was right after the November election that we suggested that they consider holding something around detection of fake news and how to authenticate different sources. They ended up holding a whole program for librarians at all of their member districts, and that ended up being something that Hadley utilized, lots of other districts, and that is direct impact to our students. So let's get that idea to them, because I'm sure if they haven't thought about it, they would love to hear.
I'll send you that. Great, okay. Action items. So approval of the AP warrant submitted in March. Yep. I made a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the AP warrants submitted in March.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All abstained. Approval of warrant submitted in March. Motion?
Motion to approve the warrant submitted in March 2018.
All in favor? I'm sorry. Seconded, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And approval of the minutes from February 26, 2018. Any questions or revisions? Is there a motion?
Move to approve those minutes of the February 26, 2018 meeting?
All in favor?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, let's see.
Other program of studies?
Program of studies, we did. Yeah. Air conditioning did. We got questions. So we're going to wait on that.
So the air conditioning bid, we will have to schedule our, if you want it to come back, the prices are good for, what did that say? 30 days from opening?
Without Sundays, or Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays, so.
30 business days?
Yeah, so it would basically.
Does somebody have an electronic calendar?
I looked and it was April 23rd.
What day did it open?
So really, I guess, well, it was opened on.
It's in here.
March 12th was the general, it was the electrical. But I believe the electrical already knows, you know, that if the project goes forward, they're going to be it, which means 30 days, 30 business days for March 12th would be April 23rd.
Yeah.
But that would be the date we would have to notify them by. So in reality, April 20th is a more realistic deadline.
So you can move your school committee meeting potentially, if you were, and I'm just grabbing my calendar.
Is this something that, based on whatever answer we get from the town, we could hold a special session just to vote on this?
Oh, you can, you can move your meeting? You can have two meetings? You could absolutely just have a.
Yeah, you could actually hold a, you know, literally a five-minute meeting if you wanted, just to approve this individual item.
Yeah.
I mean, I could certainly email David tonight.
I'm just thinking, if our meeting is supposed to be the 23rd anyways, and the week prior is school break, the week prior to that is the week of the election, right? I don't know that we want to, I don't know whether we want to move our regular meeting or just say, well, we'll commit to holding a special.
I'd be more apt to commit to the special.
Hold a special session.
Can we find a date that works now so we can get it posted, so I don't forget to do that?
Yeah. So how will that work? That's, we would, if in fact, we could, wait, is this a meeting contingent upon whether or not we can get additional funds to do the whole project?
Yeah, so I think there's a couple of things that you're asking us to find out. One is to find out, one is that we're going to go to David, am I correct on this?
Yes.
And see if, is there a way, so part of it is this conversation in tri board. Is there a way to close the gap on doing the entire job, correct? That's ultimately what we're asking. Is there a way in the short term, without going to, without going to town meeting necessarily? I, I mean, if they have existing stabilization funds for capital, I think this is what you're asking.
It might have to be a warrant article to move money. I don't know whether it would need to be.
Maybe, yeah.
To move money from a stabilization fund. Or utilize it, I just don't know.
Or to just vote to do the project without the cafe.
So basically, we need to find out if we can get that, if, if we can get that, close that gap.
Before the 23rd.
Exactly. And so we'll have to have a meet, we'll have to have a meeting regardless.
That's what I was getting at.
Right, because we have to vote this forward.
Yeah.
Yes. I believe that tri board would be on Wednesday, the 4th.
The 4th, right?
So maybe we can meet on, I don't know whether Monday, the 9th would work, or if we want to meet like Thursday, the 5th. Just to schedule, to, to hold.
So I can do Thursday, the 5th, if, yeah, I'm sorry.
How does that work for, for, as a dependent upon tri board? I don't know if I can be there on the 5th, that's all right.
What was the other option?
Monday, the 9th.
I can do the 9th. I can do the 9th.
Me too.
What time?
You guys can pick it. Are you ready?
I can do whatever you want. I can do.
Why don't we, why don't we hold 5:30 the 9th, independent upon what we hear on the 4th, whether or not, what we need to do with that.
Yeah, I can, I can still email David tonight, just to kind of.
That would be good.
Get the thought process rolling.
So there'll be one agenda item on that. And is that, does everybody, I'm just going to ask you, does everybody get out of work at that time? I mean, you can meet earlier if you'd like, but you certainly don't have to.
5:15 is early, as I can hear.
Okay, so we can start at 5:30. That's not a problem.
Okay.
Or is the morning work for anybody, or is that?
I probably. Okay.
5:30.
5:30 on the 9th. Okay, creation of SAF for the arts, for arts.
We have a wonderful idea. It's our art teachers across the district. You have a student activities fund for Hopkins Academy. They have a Hopkins Academy Student Activity Fund. Ms. Brain, Ms. Sousy, Mr. Bartlett, and I'm forgetting somebody, Mr. Richards. So your art and music teachers at both campuses would like to schedule an arts event. They would like to bring people from the community in. They would like to charge admission. The purpose of this particular fundraiser is to raise money for a recorder that a student with one arm would be able to use in music. But they'd like to be able to do this fundraiser going forward. So we're asking to create, since we only have a student activity fund for, for Hopkins Academy, we'd like to create a student activity fund that's just district-wide for the arts. And that's where they would be doing their fundraising.
I love this idea.
Yes.
Can we just motion to approve?
Yes, you can. Is there a second?
A second.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Wait a minute. Let me get all that. I'm sorry, I'm texting Sue to say, don't forget to post this.
Tara first.
Thank you.
Everybody seconded it. Pick a name. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Policies in April, and that's done. Okay.
Policies, we did that. RFP for school business services, we just talked about that. Okay, next regular meeting date then. Well, does that meeting date of April 23rd work for everybody for the regular meeting?
I think I will be on a plane, see if we can be at that day.
Okay. Otherwise?
It's good.
So April 23rd, so.
Motion.
Yep, okay, perfect. It is the day before we go to Detroit for the robotics world championship.
Ooh.
The Hadley FTC team.
That is exciting.
All right.
Can I just add one more thing?
Yeah.
Because I just noticed it on here, the water quality in drinking fountains.
Oh, yes. Oh, yeah.
So we have all of the classroom drinking fountains lined up to be replaced with lead-free components during April vacation. So those will all be done. And we are also installing, really just, well, I guess there's two reasons, financial and time. We are installing one new fountain in the hallway that will have the bottle filler as well.
Cool.
So.
And does it have the filter?
I believe it does, yes, yeah.
In here, that's elementary or?
That would be an elementary. We also have two places so far designated at Hopkins.
Oh, that's right.
And I think we have four places designated at the elementary school.
For the bottle filler?
Where you can easily put them, you know, because you need electricity there as well. So Jeff and I will walk the building just to see if there's any.
So it's got to factor in the filter costs.
Yeah.
Cool. Thanks for doing that. That's great.
Yeah. Okay, so we are going to need to stay quickly for an executive session and also April, I'm sorry, yeah, the April meeting, you talked about moving it to the cafe?
Yes, please.
I'm shaking it up.
Yeah, we're, we're going up.
Not have to relaunch.
It's for crowds.
Yes. When is our public hearing on the budget?
April 23rd.
It is. Okay, so that's part of our meeting. Got it. So we'll both do the budget.
Policies.
Yep. All right, budget presentation is April 23rd, and we'll be in the cafe.
Yep.
Okay, so we'll need to have somebody motion regarding the executive session. It's, the language is on the front of the agenda under number two, but we will not reconvene in an open session.
Not reconvene, and you don't need deployment of security and personnel or devices. It's just the first part, up to non-union personnel.
Motion to go into executive session to conduct collective bargaining sessions for contract negotiations with non-union personnel and to discuss the deployment of security personnel or devices or strategies with respect thereto. I've determined an open meeting will have detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and we will not reconvene an open session.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
And we'll do a roll call. Keith?
Aye.
Tara?
Yes.
Marah? Paul?
No.
Heather?
Yes.
Okay.